This time I'll call the March 31st, 2022 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, with liberty and justice for all. We have two items that we're going to add to the agenda today. The first one will be that of an agreement regarding First Road Bridge with KDOT. And then the second item is an update of our county policy. And with those two additions, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and second any other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the March 24th meeting, also payroll of $333,466.28, abatements of $2,979.76.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have the motion and second for approval of the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Commission comment, Ron?
I did spend a little time with a fundraiser, FFA fundraiser in Harrington, Kansas. It had a lot of turnout, looked at pretty good. Also worked with the Chamber of Commerce in Harrington last week and they had a pretty good turnout, a lot of good discussion and look forward to the retirement ceremony tomorrow.
Okay, Craig?
Yeah, I'll be attending the retirement ceremony for Maxine tomorrow. Also tomorrow, I have a solid waste meeting up in landfill. See, I can't do anything else this far next week. That's all.
Okay. And I do plan to attend that retirement also for Maxine Kaufman and that's going to be at the basement of the courthouse, 11 to 1:30. Also earlier this morning, we had Martin Tannehill here with Road and Bridge and he gave us information and answered questions in regards to a purchase that we have on the agenda for the Highway Department, but also just told us some of the areas that we're going to have some hot mix asphalt placed on. Talked about some of the increases that they have with asphalt and also some of the mastic seal. And so that was just kind of a general overview, what's going on at Road and Bridge. And a tremendous job for the county. The roads and bridges from a safety standpoint, but also transportation standpoint are important to all of us. That's all I have. We do not have any petitions or proclamations. Would there be any public comments at this time or a question on something that is not on the agenda? And I don't believe we have any comments and so we're going to go ahead and move on to our reports of county officers, our county administrator Brad Holman. I'll have you go first.
Okay, well, I'm glad to finally tell you after 14 months that families coming back home. We're going to be moving Monday and Tuesday back into the courthouse. And as far as a construction update, this is from our meeting a week ago or week and a half. And all that has pretty much changed. I mean, we've advanced, as I mentioned in the work session, the last room to be completed is your meeting room, your commission chambers and they're leaving carpet in it today, or supposed to be. So what you would see if you were in it today is the Icer folks have people running around like hustlers cleaning. And as they go through a cleaning office, they close it behind them and they were working, started on the main hallway yesterday and they had the main hallway left to do, I think downstairs and then the register deeds office. So once that's done, they pretty much have everything cleaned. The painters, for the most part, are done. They're going around doing some touch up on door frames and different spots. And we did, earlier this week, the Rupert was out again and fixed the leaks that we found out occurred during the last train. Couple of them were very obvious and just weren't completed. So hopefully we've got all the leaks taken care of and ceiling tiles replaced and electricians are doing last minute touch up things on different parts. But we'll have that going on for a couple of weeks yet and just trying to get things done. So, but it's all very small stuff and I think we'll really move. So hopefully by Wednesday morning, this time, we'll have operations back going to some degree. It won't be a complete, but we'll be able to operate and have business somewhat as normal. It's interesting, I think it was yesterday or the day before, I was over in the hallway and we were talking, Tom and I were standing talking and an older couple walks up to get their tags. I mean, said, well, not quite yet, but you need to go to the civic center. And they walked through the construction and weren't aware that we were doing that. So, so there are people out there that still don't know after 14 months that's going on. But all in all, everything's working well. We're trying to work through some options for the new judge for the ADA accessibility to his courtroom. And they have some options that I think are going to work out there. The landscapers are still working, doing their best, given the snowfall and the moisture we've had to get the irrigation system in and then they'll be ready to get to grass. And hopefully by the time we get to an open house point in the middle of May or so, we'll have all that in as well. So next week, I'll be, hopefully be able to report to you that everything went well. I don't know about meeting there next week. We may be able to, it's going to depend on the technology that we've got or everything worked out on our video so we can stream. So if not, we may have one more meeting here until we can get that done. Just the IT people are kind of over, well, not overworked, but busy.
Well, I'm not against to go to you, but that'd be the last thing we.
Absolutely, that's, that's, that's what I told Sherry. Get the rest of the departments of business up and going and that's what I told Tom all along. Get the rest of the courthouse, we can, we can live without the commission chambers working.
Should we just plan on meeting here next week?
Yeah.
That way it's all decided, we know?
Yeah. Let's see, we received notice from KDOT that they are holding what they are calling BIL meetings around the state and one of them is virtual. BIL standing for bipartisan infrastructure law meetings. And I believe that is to tell us the ins and outs of the federal infrastructure funding that has been made available. And so I, they aren't any close to us, so I scheduled us for the virtual court on April 27th. If you guys want to come into the office and sit down on that, you're certainly welcome.
Well, we'll be yours while.
Oh, is that the date? Excellent, okay. I guess we won't, will we?
I'll listen.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we'll, we'll come, we'll get that covered, so.
I couldn't mind be taped or whatever and I'd be available.
Oh, I'm sure it'll be recorded, yeah, yeah. The email that you guys got a week or two ago from the citizen down by Hope, I did forward that to, in regards to the K4, K15 intersection. I sent that to Randy West, the district engineer. He replied back, said, thank you. He was going to request a traffic study, be done at that intersection, just to see.
My contact person?
I did.
We talked to Randy though, I mean, what can be done?
I emailed him and let him know that Randy West had been contacted.
Yeah. Okay, and April 14th, which is to be two weeks. We would like to let the department heads know what they would like to come up at 9:30. We, that's the day we're going to take everybody down, show them the new ambulances and the technology and stuff in those. And we would make that available to department heads as well. And then we'll see that stuff. So we'll, we'll actually start the department head meeting right at 9:30, go down there and then come back up here and do the formal meeting once we get back up here. So. And then the last item that sold on Purple Wave was the old Surt Mobile, the old ambulance and it sold for maybe $300, I think, earlier this week. So the total money that we leaned off of Purple Wave from the last round of items we declared surplus was $50,130. So we didn't do too bad on that. And then we scheduled township day for May 2nd, the evening of May 2nd at Surt Hall. And we'll have more details to provide about that as we move forward. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you Doug.
We have a court on April the 13th with Judge Roger. We confirmed the tax sale. We prepared the deeds, so as soon as the journal entries are approved by the judge, then the deeds will be sent out and we'll have that portioning complete. So I have right now.
Okay. And of course, you know, there's an executive session on the agenda and in the work study session, Brad mentioned it'd be about 10 minutes. So just kind of FYI. Okay, we do not have, we'll go to notices and communications. Just have a few things here from Ingram's, Kansas Business Magazine. They sent that to us. We had another solicitation from a business that handles the sale of property and they send this out probably to lots of counties and municipalities. And it's just if there's any property to sell, they would want to assist with that. And then also I had an email that Harrington is getting ready to work on their comprehensive plan and will want people to be involved and aware of that particular project that they're working on. Is there anything else that anyone else would have? Okay. We do not have any unfinished business. We will go on to other business. We have a conditional use permit for Longnecker Tire. And Tim, if you'd go ahead and just kind of give us a little bit of an overview of the procedure that took place to bring it up to this point now.
Okay, please find the attached staff report for consideration of a conditional use permit for the continued operation of a commercial trucking company to include retail part sales and vehicle service at the address of 2434 Highway 15. Longnecker Trucking Incorporated purchased this commercial facility from the previous owner, who also ran a small trucking company for many years. The current owner, Hadley Longnecker, has been operating from this location since it was purchased in mid-2021. It is not unusual for a real estate transaction to take place in which the purchaser of an existing commercial facility is unaware of permitting requirements. This is especially the case if the new owner is proposing a nearly identical use to what was their, what has been present on that site for many years. This case was brought to staff's attention from a member of the public over concerns of retail sales without a conditional use permit. It was determined by staff that a sufficient change from the previous owner's operation to warrant a conditional use permit was required. So this, this would include emergency off hours, repairs and additional retail sales. On January 20th, the Planning Commission heard public comment regarding the application for Longnecker Trucking. Staff has also included additional concerns submitted via email from Manji Evans and staff response to, and the case was tabled until March 17th. For further information from the applicant regarding fence material and design, which was, was presented at that hearing. The Planning Commission voted unanimously six to oh to recommend approval of CUP 22-2 with the following conditions. All outdoor lighting must be directed within the confines of the subject property. Proposed eight-foot privacy fence must be completed no later than December 31st, 2022. Applicant must abide by all state and/or federal requirements for discarding tires in all EPA, KDHE environmental laws. Any expansion involving water or waste facilities will require evaluation of current sizing of well and septic by Environmental Services. Applicant must consult with Environmental Services Department to identify the current location of both the well and wastewater systems. There can be no parking of vehicles over any well or septic elements. Applicant must consult with Road and Bridge Department on the feasibility of this proposed additional entrance. In the future, the commission options would be to approve with the above referenced conditions, approve with any additional conditions as deemed necessary or deny the request. This option would require evidence the use is an imminent environmental or traffic hazard that no conditions imposed would alleviate. Staff has included the staff report that was submitted that gives basically review criteria. What I was going to do is try to briefly go over this review criteria, if possible.
Okay, if that'd be helpful or.
Yeah, yeah. And so what we did is, these are the things that you have to consider as, as the commission, based on Article 26. Whether approval of the conditional use would be consistent with the intent and purpose of these regulations. This use would be consistent with the intent and purpose found in Article 1. Two tenants of the zoning regulations are to inform the public on future development and to manage growth and promote economic development to the benefit of the citizens of Dixon County. Item B, whether the location of the proposed use is compatible with other land uses in the surrounding neighborhood. The county removed commercial and industrial zoning districts that I enforce from the zoning regulations several years ago. Therefore, the method of evaluating compatibility is to examine land use patterns across the county and precedence made by the county in similar cases. The pattern of a commercial use on a state highway and adjacent to residential use or subdivision is found throughout the county, most notably around the urbanized areas such as Abilene, Chapman and Solomon. Furthermore, the county approved a similar use with a nearly identical land use pattern outside of Harrington in 2020. Item C, whether the proposed use places an undue burden on the existing transportation and service facilities in the area affected. And if so, whether such additional transportation and service facilities can be provided. K15 is currently maintained by the state and is designed to handle truck traffic. No additional utility or service facilities may be affected. Item D, whether the proposed use is made necessary or desirable because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected. No changes in land use within the area around this parcel have taken place for several years. The subject property and structure predate the establishment of the North Ridge subdivision to the east. The commercial structure was constructed in 1965. Item E, length of time the subject property has remained vacant. That does not apply in this particular case. Item F, whether the applicant's property is suitable for the proposed use. General, the property is suitable for the use. Previous two owners ran similar trucking related uses. However, the applicant is extending the hours of operation of the use to a 24/7 service facility, which warrants review as a conditional use permit. Furthermore, this property is a, is two acres and served by well and septic and inspection of both the water and wastewater facilities serving the parcel would need to be performed for any future expansion. While the additional acreage the applicant is acquiring may bring the parcel to approximately, approximately three acres. It's actually more like 2.5 or 2.6. Further expansion may be limited due to separation requirements between structures and waste well and wastewater facilities as outlined in our environmental code. Item G is included herein. Item H, whether the proposed conditional use would be in conformance to and further enhance the implementation of the comprehensive plan. Currently, the future land, land use map designates this area as suitable for development. This pertains to both commercial and residential development. This is due to the proximity of utilities and transportation routes. Therefore, the proposed use is in conformance with the plan. Whether the relative gain to the public health, safety and general welfare outweighs the hardship imposed on the applicant by not upgrading the value of the property by approving the proposed conditional use. Given that similar uses in locations with similar land use patterns have been approved in the past, there would need to be evidence presented that would prove that this use would, would pose a unique and imminent threat to the surrounding area. The conditions placed on this use may sufficiently mediate the potential environmental and safety threats. Item J, whether the proposed conditional use, if it complies with all conditions upon which the approval is made contingent as authorized on Article 22, will not adversely affect property in the area affected. The conditions placed on this use, as with any use approved through a conditional use permit, are designed to alleviate, not necessarily eliminate, potential adverse impacts to adjacent conflicting uses. It is staff opinion that the conditions listed herein would fully, when fully enforced, may help to alleviate the principal concerns of the public. Staff recommendation and the Planning Commission recommendation is to recommend previously mentioned conditions.
Okay, are there questions from the?
You mentioned the Road and Bridge Department would have to be accessed for the north. That's township road or their private drive?
The, it's, it's technically a township maintained, but we, it's my understanding Road and Bridge didn't meet with the applicant and, and as well.
The entries for the townships?
Oh, okay.
That comes to that, to make sure they meet.
You mean in subdivisions?
Well, anywhere, anywhere in a township, if somebody wants a new driveway, we, Martin goes out and looks at it and recommends whether they do it or not. We, we don't put it in.
Okay.
We just look at it, we permit it for them.
Okay, in other words, it has to have permit to the county to be able to.
So you don't put it on the backside of the hill or something like that?
Breakway hill.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we don't do the work, but we do the permitting because they don't have offices.
Yeah, I was on township boards and they put in, the county was never out there to do it or even looked at it.
Yeah, we changed it years ago because we, if you remember the one up on Mink Road where the, the work was going in the ditch and now we have problems.
Yeah, well, rain.
So we started permitting them all.
That's all I have to say.
It takes a little of the heat off the township too, so.
Now, Tim, there were the conditions on the property and so the outdoor lighting that's directional and so on and the fence and, but just kind of clarification, the completion time of the applicant's, subject to approval of this, that he would have to complete all that work?
December 31st, 2022.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? We have the applicant here too. If you, maybe you're just here to answer questions, but if you did want any comment, I mean.
I, I have a very well, if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer those.
I would like to say that one of the things we're striving for is economic development and it does bring jobs in the community.
And you, I know we did it in the work session, but you might know how many jobs, how many people you employ.
Yeah, right now there are seven full-time employees.
That includes the?
The trucking and the repair.
Okay. Well, and you know, a lot of times, I know we have those discussions at economic development or other groups, that, you know, it's unlikely, I mean, it's great when we have someone like Russell Stover that happened to come here and provide a lot of jobs and has a large footprint. But typically in communities our size, you want to make gains where it's the small businesses that make the difference and it's the small businesses that gradually grow. And that's certainly one of the important aspects. And so, so anyway, I appreciate the, I think it's challenging for anyone to start a business and, and, and yet it's, it's a great opportunity and so we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to have a motion if, if, for approval on this? Is, is there a motion for approval?
I move we approve the CUP for long neck tire.
I'll second it.
With the recommendations that the planning zoning committee brought before us.
Okay. So the CUP, a conditional use permit for Longnecker Tire. Trucking, excuse me.
That's a tire on mine here too.
Yeah, so that's Longnecker Trucking and the conditional use permit. And then as Craig had mentioned, with the conditions that were outlined by the zoning administrator. Any other discussion or question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, and let's see, is there something that I need to sign on behalf of the commission, Tim? Or I'm just going to have to do that now?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, and appreciate those that serve.
Yeah.
On the zoning, it was mentioned in our report, he was six oh in favor of it and they review the applicant, they, the conditions have to be in place and we appreciate the volunteer work they do in regards to. We're going to go ahead and move on. The next thing is to consider the purchase of a laboratory pile driver. This is for the Highway Department and this was something that Martin Tannehill had brought up in the work study session this morning and had also provided this information on it. Brad, would you want to offer a summary of what this involves and the purpose?
Yes, this would be an opportunity to replace our crane that's been on a capital improvement scope for several years, roughly half million dollars. Problem that we've run into that is that the cost of certifying operators to operate a crane which is required by OSHA has gone up to over $11,000 per person. And that's a cost you pay whether they graduate from and achieve the certification or not. And with the turnover that we have, in fact, we have our, our two main crane operators have been here for 30 plus years and certainly are facing retirement. When we lose them, we won't have anybody to operate the crane we have, which is 47 years old. So Martin, I'm really glad that he has come up with the opportunity now to, to be able to achieve the same goal by driving our H piling on our brig sites with a, with a device that he has proposed here today. And so what this will do, this will allow us to sell the crane, eliminate it. It, this does the same job much quicker, more efficiently and there's no certification required and the dangers involved are much less, much less. So the proposal is to purchase this device that goes on the end of the track hoe or the excavator from Hercules Machine Corporation in the amount of $119,000.
Okay, and we had started the process anyway where we were setting some money aside for, to replace a crane and Martin had mentioned that in the work study session, which would also be a little bit of an offset. And, excuse me, I think the other part that comes to mind too is there are some bridge replacements that we have Road and Bridge take care of and the savings that that provides compared if we had to contract all of that out and take bids. And they understand just depending on the scope of the projects, what regulations and standards have to be achieved on that. But you know, that's something I, I'm kind of guessing not every county does and we're set up to do that and that helps us achieve that particular part on some of the smaller bridge projects. Also, Martin had mentioned it'd be about four to six weeks that he would be able to have that. Okay, is there a motion for that purchase?
I'll make a motion to purchase the equipment.
Second one, sorry. So, move, second one, sorry.
You want to do one?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second, and that is for the pile driver for the highway department, $119,000. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a couple of things that we added to the agenda that we'll do before we have the executive session. Uh, the first one is a KDOT agreement, um, and this is in regards to the First Road Bridge. Brad, would you give us a little more information on that, please?
Yes, that's the, uh, the actual agreement with KDOT for the caution program with, uh, to engage them on the, the bridge at 1145 First Road. This is a bridge that we're, uh, doing in conjunction with Clay County. This will be our first caution program bridge that we've done, and, uh, the agreement specifies, like all agreements with KDOT, who's responsible for what. In this particular case, the Secretary of Transportation will cover 51% of the total actual cost of construction, up to, uh, not to exceed price of $624,000, $641.60. Sure, that $0.60 is important, so. The estimated engineers estimate of this project is 1.2 million, so the remaining amount of the construction costs, as well as the, uh, any railway and preliminary, uh, engineering, will be borne by Clay County and us. That will be split based on our, the evaluation of our counties by percentage, so we're looking at roughly $350,000 to $400,000, I think. Our share of Clay County would be the remainder, so, uh, something we had in the budget. Applied for and finally got approved for, so, with to start the process, we just need to sign these agreements and get them back to them.
Okay, is there a motion?
I wonder if it'd be in the last, I don't know what it is.
I think October.
That's what I remember these days.
Yeah, I'm glad you knew that, you know, because I didn't.
I'm not, that's what Martin said.
I think October.
So, construction probably wouldn't start till next.
Next week, so, yeah.
Let me, I, I, I ask a question, I think I know the answer to. Inflated cautions, we'll have to, I mean, I'm saying we're saying $100,000. I think it's going to come in that cheap, so.
If the bids come back and they're higher, we, we certainly have the option to, to sit on and do it again, and we both know that's going to continue to go up, so. Yeah. Yeah, KDOT's just locking us in at their $600.
The maximum they'll pay is $600.
Yeah.
$0.60.
Yes.
$0.60, yeah.
I'd go ahead and move that we enter this agreement with KDOT on this bridge project.
I'll second that.
So the motion and the second, any other question or comment? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Second item we had is an update on our county policies, and Brad, you had gone through here and, um, highlighted, uh, a few items. You'd go ahead and.
Yeah, this is, uh, basically housekeeping items for the most part, on, uh, several policies that deal with capers and our health insurance, uh, agreed web leave and then personal leave. And there is one slight change on, on the top, on section 307, personal leave that we recommend be changed, and that is in the fourth paragraph, starts to schedule planning, to schedule planned personal leave, employees, and we would, uh, request to change, should request to, shall be required, advance approval from their supervisors. Other than that, I think everything else is, that's what we would request to have that amendment.
This is something that we do go through and have revisions.
Every year.
And for example, you know, one of them is on Heartland Healthcare Clinic is what it's called now, used to be family care clinic, um, and just to, like you say, housekeeping items to make sure that we have everything up to date, compliance.
You know, failure to do that every year, even more often, you can get some real tail information, and, uh, the only thing that's consistent is nothing stays the same.
I'd go ahead and offer the motion, too, that we update the county policy as outlined in our report.
Second.
Have the motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item we have, um, is that an executive session? This is for attorney-client, unelected personnel, and it'll be for 10 minutes, and I would move that we, um, go into session, um, at 11:37. Give us a minute to, and 15 seconds to clear the room.
Second that.
10 minutes, yeah. We have the motion and second.
Commissioners plus.
That commissioners, yes.
And.
It would include our administrator and, uh, Doug Thompson and the commissioners at 11:37 for 10 minutes, and this is for attorney-client slash non-elected person, personnel. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, and we'll go into executive session for 10 minutes. Executive session, it's 11:47. I would move that we return to regular session.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second to leave executive session, return to regular session. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, we did receive information attorney-client privilege and do not have anything to announce or any action to be taken as a result of our executive session. I would move we adjourn.
Second that.
We have the motion and second to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.